Mr. Williams, I should just say that we're lucky enough to have this afternoon sitting and just watching proceedings, those from the Constitutional Court in Albania. But obviously, that makes no difference to this here.
Okay, my lord. Well, I'll speak to my then friend, Mr. Burton. I will try and find myself 20 minutes in my chap 30, but I'll be as quick as I can.
Thank you.
Ground three.
Yep.
The issue under ground three is narrow. It's whether the council failed, as a matter of fact, to appreciate that the development it authorised under the 2022 Commission did not include a substation.
Yep.
We accept that the omission, these are my Lord, Justice, of its term, of the substation from the 2022 Commission was a mandatory material consideration. That is, it was so obviously material that the council was legally required to take it into account. What we say, under this ground, is that on any objective analysis, it would have been, it is obvious that the council, both its professional officers and members, would have been and were aware that the development authorised under the 2022 Commission did not include a substation. And I say that because in my submission, there are a number of very powerful positive indicators that they were so aware. Can I start firstly with the most powerful indicator? And that is the terms by which the 2022 Commission itself was granted, and in particular, the plans it approved and the conditions it attached. My lords, if I can then take you to the 2022 Commission, which is at tab 17 of the Court Bundle.
Yep.
Page 239. Been to this already, so I could take it quickly.
Yep.
There is a list of approved plans at the bottom of that page. They are the new plans that were submitted with the section 73 application. And then there's the usual conditions plan, a condition two, which prohibited development being carried out other than in complete accordance with the approved plans. And that listed those seven plans, and then listed a number of other plans which were retained from the original 2017 Commission. Now, we know, because we've seen it already, that the site layout plan, in this case, did not show a substation. But nor does this list of approved plans include a plan which showed the details of any substation. And that can be compared with the 2017 Commission, which did have such an approved plan. And that's found at tab five of the supplementary bundle. Page 72. And it is a plan that we refer to, the typical single 33 KV GRP housing switchgear, GIS triple zero.
And are we to assume that the members of the planning committee would have had sight of the 2017 Commission?
Well, that's the relevant context. And my lord, this is the section 73 application which sought to, in common parlance, vary that. The sure point is that no such plan was included in condition, condition two of the 2022 Commission. That omission wasn't an error. That wasn't a mistake. That was intentional exclusion because the 2022 Commission did not include the substation. And I can make that point even better by carrying on in the same Commission, a few pages, that's the 2017 Commission, to page 75. And condition 15. That's condition 15 to 2017 Commission. That was a pre-commencement condition which required details to be submitted and approved in relation to the citing and details of the then proposed substation. And as Mr. Myler and Mr. Green has indicated, that subsequently happened. Now, if we go back to the 2022 Commission, and we look at Court Bundle, page 242, we see that condition 15 is a different condition. There is no equivalent condition in the 2022 Commission which requires the submission of details in relation to the substation. Now, again, that wasn't an omission by mistake or oversight. The reason why the condition was omitted, if there wasn't an equivalent to condition 15, was because the 2022 Commission didn't grant consent for a substation, and officers and members would have understood that. Now, if the council were labouring under the misapprehension that the 2022 application did include, or ought to have included, the 33 KV substation, what they would have done was include a condition which refers to the plans that were approved under condition 15, and require compliance with them. That's precisely what they did in relation to other conditions.
Well, it is a simple point, that when the officers report on this, they draw attention to a number of details under the conditions of the 27 Commission, 17 Commission, which have already been approved, and they're carried into this consent, as I understand it.
In the 2022 consent?
Yes.
Yes, that's right.
But you're saying, not the substation details?
Absolutely. And so, when you, when you, when you understand that, and you understand that that's done with state, that was done on purpose, officers realised they were omitting that because they weren't, it wasn't necessary. And when members looked at that and with the plans, it was plain as a pike star in my submission, that they would have understood that 2022 Commission didn't include a substation. Indeed, in order to find the claimant, sorry, the response on this ground, this court would have to include firstly, that the council did not appreciate, both officers and members, didn't appreciate what development was and was not permitted by the approved plans, i.e. they overlooked what was not permitted. And secondly, that the omission of the reference to the substation plan in condition two, and the omission of condition 15 in its entirety, was a mistake.
You say officers and members. I mean, isn't it really members? Because they're the decision-making body.
That's right, my lord. But in this case, the decision-making body followed the recommendations of professional officers. In my submission, unless there was some positive indication to the contrary, the court can properly assume and impute that knowledge to members. That's the first positive indication. The second positive indication is the context. There was an obvious reason why the 2022 Commission omitted the substation, and that's because the council understood that the solar farm permitted by the 2022 Commission was to operate in tandem with the substation granted by the 2021 Commission. And together, they would enable electricity to be exported to the grid. That was the council's understanding, and that is clear from the officer's report. And if I can, there's a number of places, if I can give you one, two clear references, my lords, if we go to tab 18 of the Court Bundle, that's the officer's report. Paragraph 8.3, final sentence, null and final line. It is about this application. This application only seeks to vary the original solar farm permission, that's the 2017 Commission, with the aim that the varied solar farm permission and the substation permission can operate in parallel. And then 8.4, under principle of development, about five lines down, the current proposals are intended to ensure the site can function together with the 2021 Commission for a substation. Unless there was any doubt as to the situation, if we go to the updated report at page 275, the passage you already have taken to paragraph 3.6, the solar farm will be connected to the grid and existing fiber network through the permitted substation application.
And how did the judge deal with these passages?
The judge said that there was some misunderstanding, well, he said there was some misunderstanding in the officer's report as to what objections were, and I'll come on to those no more. But in my submission, what the judge didn't do is give the weight to these passages. He should have. Had, in my submission, had he properly understood the plans, the omission of the condition, and these passages, he would have understood that these are all very weighty positive indications, that the local planning authority, both its professional officers and its members, were fully aware of what was not being committed.
So, and where does the judge deal with it in his?
In the...
I mean, 144 is his conclusion? I mean, is it really only 142 and 143?
My lord, I'm sorry, 1...
It starts at 141, I think, doesn't it?
Yes.
Page 428 of the report.
Yes. He says, 142, like in the key point, he said the removal of the 33 KV substation is not referred to amongst the enclosures. And I accept that the officer's report doesn't go on in terms to say, and therefore, that the original substation is being admitted. But in my submission, that is what the officer's report does make clear, is the purpose of the section 73 application was to firstly amend the 2017 Commission so that it was consistent with the 2022, 2021 substation commission, and secondly, that they would operate in tandem so the electricity could be exported to the grid.
Well, in 142, he focuses very much on the removal of the 33 KV substation. And in that context, it then becomes relevant to decide whether the original permission was for a substation as such, or a 33 KV substation specifically, on which we have...
My lord, I could go with my then friend, as I would do, but I do, Mr. Green, that it's for a substation. The only qualification in relation to that is in relation to condition two and the...
I mean, your point is, there is no substation in the 2022 Commission?
Absolutely. And that members and officers would have been aware of that. And so, there was a very good context and a very good reason why, why members wouldn't say, well, where's the substation gone? Because they knew that that had been granted a year ago. They would have understood that. And the third positive indication is this. We say that the fact it has been obvious to the council, both officers and members, is not some product of x facto reasoning. It's not only obvious on a forensic reading of the application. We say it would have been and was apparent to, to use the term my then friend, a non-forensic reader. And I say that because it's clear from the consultation responses, that members of the public perusing the application and the documents realised that the substation was being emitted. And we can, I can make that submission good by turning my lord's attention to page 253 of the main bundle. And my lord has been taken to one of the references at the top, page 254, the words from one of the objectors, removing the solar farm's 33 KV substation. So at least one of the representatives has recognized that. My Lord, Justice Holgate referred to the fourth bullet point under previous applications, and indicated that there was some confusion amongst that objector in relation to the presence or absence of the 33 KV connection. But it's important to read that bullet point right to the end. Because if one looks at the very last sentence there, it says this, so much has changed, and without reference to the 200814 fulls, that is, the 2021 Commission, it would be very hard to follow. Necessary inference being, well, when you have regard to the 2021 Commission, it's not hard to follow. There are more references over the page 255, under heading Full Extent of Plans. First bullet point, I see a lot of smoke and mirrors going on here, looking at the plans, I see still gaps, and now the plans don't even show the full extent of the project, i.e. no substation. Then the next bullet point, and for your lord's note, this bullet point was Mr. Fisk, Mrs. Fisk's husband, that he says, third line, what is clearly shown is the removal of the substation previously considered essential of the commission. So my lord, there are two points to be made about that. This respondent is coming to the court to ask, this court to find that although the omission of the substation was clear and obvious to members of the public, that it was not obvious to the council. That's the first point. And I say that that really isn't a realistic point in the context. And secondly, even if it was good, the observations were faithfully recorded in the officer's report, which would have been brought it to members' attention. So my lord, we say that those are all multiple weighty indicators, that the council were aware, were fully aware, that the permission they were granting 2022 did not include a substation.
And this is a finding of fact effectively made by the judge. What legal test do we apply to set it aside?
Well, my lord, in my submission, you are equally well-placed to the judge of the first instance. He had the very same material as you. This is not a case where he's making a finding of fact following live evidence or the like, where it's quite understandable that a appeal court would be very reluctant to interfere with that. Here, I would invite the court in my submission to take their own view on the, whether officers or members knew that the 2022 Commission didn't include a substation.
I mean, that would mean that in any judicial review, the Court of Appeal could interfere with any finding of fact, just because it would have taken a different view? Is that the law?
My lord, certainly, as I understand the law to be, the appellate courts in judicial review matters are more willing and less circumcised about interfering, if that's what I want to use, overturning a fact made on inferences drawn from documents which are, were before the first instance court and are before this appeal court. There's no reason why the, you are in any worse position than Mr. Justice Morris to make those conclusions.
That's a different point from, from the legal test. There was some discussion about this in Chagos Islanders and later, but I imagine you would be content with us to look at those authorities. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Just on this point, I was wondering whether there was a slightly different way of approach to this, because the judge in 142, 143, looks at what's before the court. That's why you make a submission, well, this court has the same material. But this is a judicial review of a planning decision taken by a local authority. I'm trying to remember the name of the case, stat in which Law Justice Judge stated what the correct approach was to dealing with deficiencies in officers' reports to, to members of planning committees.
Yes.
It's a brewer, isn't it?
My lord, it might be, whether it was materially misleading.
Well, that's, that's, it was this materially misleading to the members?
Absolutely.
And that could include omissions which make the effect of the report materially misleading?
Absolutely.
That's, that's perhaps the correct judicial review approach for the court at first instance and this court. And I'm not sure that's what the judge did in these paragraphs.
It isn't, my lord. And to be fair to the judge, because that wasn't the way in which the claim was brought. The claim has never been brought, never sort of been brought, on the basis that the officer's report in this case materially and significantly misled members. Plainly, it did not.
It's the function of the officer's report to give them enough information to be able to take a decision without being over, the court's being over-demanding in that respect.
Absolutely, my lord. And the height of my friend, the respondent's case, is that the officer's report didn't go on and express in turnsums that the original substation was no longer permitted under the 2022 Commission. The case was never run that that was materially misleading, because plainly, it wasn't.
Right. That's your ground three. You have used your 20 minutes, so you're into Mr. Burton.
Over time. I'd be very brief on ground four.
Of course. Can I just check on ground four? This applies only to your ground three? Is this right?
It only applies to ground three. It only applies if you're against us in relation to ground three.
Yep.
And the issue is whether, even if the council failed to appreciate that the 2020 Commission permitted the substation, whether it would be highly likely that the permission would have been granted anyway. And we say it would have been highly likely, and the court can find as much. And we say that for the foreign reasons. Firstly, the principle of permitting a solar farm in this location had been established by the 2017 Commission. And that was recognised in the officer's report in the 2021 Commission. But you'll note that paragraph 8.6, page 109 of the supplementary bundle, and it was also reflected in the officer's report for the 2022 Commission, paragraph 8.4, page 261. So, principle established for the solar farm in this location. Secondly, the DNO substation, which was necessary to connect that solar farm to the grid, had been found by the council to be acceptable in planning terms, see the grant for the 2021 Commission. Thirdly, what the officer's report did in this case was to consider the planning merits of the amendments of the layout to ensure that those two commissions could operate together, that there was no inconsistency between them. And if I could take my lord to one passage in the bundle, that's tab 18, page 260 of the main bundle.
Yep.
It's shorthand, but we can see there, at 8.1, all of the planning considerations that were undertaken in relation to the amendments that were made, and whether they were acceptable in planning terms or not. Now, there's no reason why, if may have officers and members were labouring under the misapprehension that the substation was being permitted when it was not, that would have affected any of those assessments. My then friend for the respondent doesn't point to any part of the officer's report and say, here is how it would have made a difference to the assessment of the planning merits, and plainly it would not. This is not a case where the council was under a misapprehension that the 2022 Commission secured, for instance, some critical mitigation, when it did not. It didn't think some tree planting was coming forward, or some ecological enhancements were coming forward, and it did not. We say that the omission of the original substation made not a jot of difference to the assessment of the planning merits that was undertaken in this officer's report. Now, the respondent says, and the judge below accepted, that a half, members, if they had realised that the 2022 Commission did not include a 33 KV substation, may have asked whether that matters. Because on the facts as they present the case, it's necessary to have this additional 33 KV substation in order to export the electricity to the grid. We don't accept that as a matter of fact, but I don't ask this court to determine that. The point is a simple one. That submission, which was accepted by Mr. Justice Morris, is based on a false premise. And the false premise is this, that it's the function and responsibility of a local planning authority, when determining planning applications, to scrutinise the technical aspects of a proposal to determine whether it will function, quite apart from its planning merits. That's not the local planning authority's role. The local planning authority's role is to assess whether what is proposed is acceptable in planning terms, in land use terms. It is entitled to assume that an experienced professional developers understand what's necessary to export electricity to the grid, and are not going to spend billions of pounds developing a solar farm which is inoperable. So, even if Mrs. Fisk were correct that a further 33 KV substation is necessary, then the response of the local planning authority would have been, well, if you're right, the applicant can go away and seek a further consent for that, but that doesn't affect the planning merits for what they have proposed at the moment. And my lord, I can be very short about this, but the court could be confident that that would have been the response of the local planning authority, because they've essentially taken that stance on two occasions previously. And just to go through the bundles, and I'll be very brief with this I can. The first is a supplementary bundle, page 84.
Thank you.
And this is the officer's report for the discharge of condition 15 to the 2017 Commission, where the officers were approving the location and details of the 33 KV substation. Page 85, representation to be made that this wasn't sufficient to connect the solar farm to the grid. And the officers said, dealt with this at page 85, the first main paragraph, these matters, having summarised those concerns, these matters are not however relevant to the determination of this current application. The details submitted are pursuant to inconsistent with the plan mission, showing the use of the 33 KV substation. If it is later found by the applicant that a connection with the facility is not possible viable, then an alternative means of gaining the permission of the LPA for an alternative may be required. Of course it might be. And then they could go along and make that application at that stage, which didn't affect the planning merits of what was before them. Similarly, in relation to the grant of plan for the 2021 Commission, the substation, if we could turn to page 88.
Sorry, page?
88.
Thank you.
This is, I'm just being very quick, my lord, and I can apologise for taking the counter. But this is a covering letter to, which went along with the application for the 2021 substation. And you'll note that the penultimate paragraph, that the applicants there indicated that a replacement tower pylon will be required, and any relevant consent for this will be gained separately by the DNO. So there was a, yeah, there was another element which was necessary. Now, that was recognised by the officers in the officer's report. That's made clearly set out at a paragraph 8.45 of the officer's report, which is at page 120. In the context of Woodland Solar Farm, the development includes a new substation underground feeder cables which produce the EMF, no new overhead line, save for that connecting with a new pylon to be constructed by SSD.
Sorry, this is paragraph?
8.45.
Thank you.
Third and fourth line. And my lord, to actually, maybe even clearer example, if we go back to paragraph, page 95, paragraph 3.7. In describing the DNO substation which was being applied for, in parentheses in the fourth paragraph, it says the gantry connecting to the replacement overhead line pylon tower.
You've got one more minute.
Short point is, if Mr. Fisk is right, there needs to be another 33 KV, didn't affect the planning merits of what was proposed in the 2022 Commission, the result would have been the same. They would have just said, go away, and make another application for it. And at that stage, we'll decide whether that is acceptable in planning terms or not, my lord, unless I can be of any further assistance.
Well done. Any further questions? Yeah. Thank you very much indeed. Mr. Burton?
Yes, may it please you, my lord. I will follow the structure, taking the grounds in turn, grouping grounds one and two, ground of appeal one and two together, before I come on to three and four. At the outset, though, may I make a point that I make in my skeleton argument, that clearly, the learning judge below heard all of these arguments from the appellant's and rejected them in a conspicuously careful judgment. And equally, in order to succeed in, as it were, saving the 2022 Commission, the appellant's must succeed on all of grounds one, two, and three, or three or four. Of course, they could, they could lose on a three but win on four, and so win.
I think you've worked out the permutations.
Absolutely. Yeah. I need to begin with, I'm afraid, some, under ground one, some corrections to the relevant factual matrix.
Of course.
By reference to what my then friends have, have set out. And the, the key, the key facts here, first, and to answer a question that my lord Holgate raised, can we begin, please, with the original permission, the 2017 Commission, in the supplementary bundle? So that's at tab five of the supplementary bundle. And the submission I made below, and if my lords need to see this, it's, it's set out in terms in my Armstrong-written submission, which is the very end. But the submission I made below is that it is the case that the grant part included a 33 KV substation. below is that it is the case that the grant part included a thirty three K V substation, rather than, as it were, just, just an undefined substation. But it wasn't necessary for the claimant to succeed to actually go on and satisfy the judge of that. The reason it's included is, it's for the reasons my lord Holgate has given, namely that the grant part, which begins with the word hereby grant, runs all the way down because it includes, in accordance with the approved plans listed, listed below, it includes in those plans, as my lords have seen, the plan showing a thirty three K V substation. So whilst there were clearly some details regarding that thirty three kilovolt substation to be cleared up, and that was the purpose of condition fifteen, not least its citing and exactly what its external materials would be like and lighting and so on, that it was to be a thirty three K V substation was fixed in my submission by the grant part. Now, and the judge below was rightly alive to that wording, he does set it out in his, in his, in his judgement.
And the relevant one is O two drawing dis?
Dis, it's dis, dis triple zero.
Triple zero, yeah.
Yes, yeah, which my lords have already looked at. The, the second point, and here, my learned friend, Mr Green, by going to that witness statement from Mr Redpath, I submit, did really miss an important part of the factual history here. The second point is that when the council granted the twenty seventeen permission, it did so on the clear understanding, which must have been what was put to it, that this thirty three kilovolt substation was all that was needed to connect to the power grid. And contrary to the way it was put by my learned friend relying on that much later witness statement from Mr Redpath, and that can be seen very clearly from the officer update report to the members of the planning committee in relation to the application that led to that twenty seventeen permission. And these words are quoted, it's a tab four of the supplementary bundle, page sixty three, these words are quoted and emphasised by the judge below, and rightly so. Could I ask, please, my lord, to read those paragraphs three point six to three point eight, please?
Thank you.
And what my lords will see is the clear understanding that it's, it's this substation, which is the quote, only structure required would be this single story building and the measurements given, and it would be right next to the existing tower. And of course, there's nothing there, no hint whatsoever, indeed to the contrary, that there needed to be any additional D N O structures as well. Now, that changed, that understanding changed substantially because, and this is something that the judge carefully records, my lords do not have the documentation in the appeal bundle, but it's in the agreed chronology, because in twenty nineteen, the developer submitted its first section seventy three application for a full-blown D N O compound. So this very sizeable thing that is then later granted by the council by the twenty twenty one permission. It submitted that under section seventy three and the council granted it purported to grant it under section seventy three. My client challenged and the council agreed to quash it.
We don't have the quashing order, do we?
We, my lords don't have the quashing order, my lords have the history, it's all set out carefully in the judgement, in the judgement below.
But can I be clear? Whatever the ground was for the consent order is not germane to what we have to decide. No one's put that before us.
It, it, it's not, my lord.
Thank you.
My, my client argued that.
And that's all I need to know, thank you.
In any event, to answer one point raised by questions from my lord Dingerman, it was known well before, well before, the developer came to discharge condition fifteen to the twenty seventeen permission, that more was needed. So the way that my learned friend was putting it on the basis that the discharge application for condition fifteen and the application that led to the twenty twenty one permission were happening in parallel, and that, and that somehow explained why condition fifteen was discharged, even though on his case it wasn't necessary because the thirty three kilovolt substation was subsumed within the application for the twenty twenty one permission, that doesn't, that doesn't stand. Now, the next point that's very, very important to understand, and it runs entirely counter to the way the case has been put to my lords on the facts, is that the thirty three kilovolt substation, which, which was, and this is all explained in my client's witness statements, which was a customer, so the developer's sender substation, that formed no part of the D N O compound that was granted by the twenty twenty one permission. And in order to see this visually, very clearly, please could we turn to my client's witness statement for these proceedings? It's a, it's a, so it's our second witness statement of August twenty twenty two, which was, I should say, five months before the case came on, before Mr Justice Morris. We can see in the, in the text, page two nineteen, two eighteen, two nineteen, tab twenty six in the supplementary bundle. In the text, what she does, if my lords could please look at paragraph six, she explains the different elements required for a solar farm like this to actually work through connecting to the grid, there needs to be first a sender, a customer substation at thirty three kilovolt that sends the power to the D N O receiver thirty three kilovolt substation. That power is then stepped up within the D N O compound transform, by the D N O compound transformer to one hundred and thirty two kilovolt, and then the D N O main substation sends that one hundred and thirty two kilovolt power into the, into the grid. She explains, and this is the, this is the nub, paragraph eleven, as she explains at paragraph eleven, what was granted in twenty twenty one does not include the developer's sender substation, and she explains that by reference to the crucial twenty twenty one drawing, which shows, and she's marked it up, but with her marking up, she's shown what is there, namely, the D N O receiver substation, the transformer.
This is page two two five.
It is page two two five, yes, page two two five.
And is there anything on the ground at the moment?
Well, in answer to my lord's question, are there, which was whether solar panels, the answer is no. My, I can't assist the court further so well.
My lord, we've had a structural problem, the substation has been built, there's no panels on site.
And what bit of the substation, if one's looking at C F I?
That, my lord, is beyond.
No, don't worry, okay, thank you very much.
Yes, in any event.
Can I just ask a question? Was this point, which I see very clearly in the witness, was it deployed before the local authority?
At what stage, my lord?
Well, at any stage before they took their decision, this being judicial review.
For, for this, may I just, may I just check that?
Well, it's fresh air.
Well, I'm, I'm being told various objection letters, but I, I don't have.
Can I leave it with you? I, I've not seen it being deployed before the decision maker.
Yeah.
The first time it appeared seems to be in the courts.
Because there is a summary of, of the objections that were made by your client and others, and this distinct point, which is, by the way, this is never going to work because you're missing out a thirty three K V substation, doesn't appear to be distinctly taken before them.
Could I, could I come, could I, could I come back on that, please? Where, where I am going with this, though, is my learned friend's assertion made to the court, and I have to call it that, that when granting the twenty twenty one permission, which runs all the way through my learned friend submissions, that the twenty twenty one permission included the customer, the developer sender, thirty three kilovolt substation, it, it just doesn't hold, and there is no basis for that. The paragraph that my learned friends have both taken the court to, which is paragraph three point seven in the committee report for the twenty twenty one substation, which is tab eleven. The reason that that refers, and this is the point my learned friend Mr Green drew the court's attention to, to one hundred and thirty two K V slash thirty three K V, is because those are the D N O elements, the receiver thirty three K V D N O substation.
But that's all he said, though.
Yeah, well, my, my, my learned friend, I understood my learned friend, Mr Green, to saying, to be saying, that, that shows that this substation, this substation was in the twenty twenty one permission.
So in fact, all of this is a complete exercise in futility because, unknown to the developer, they really do need the thirty three K V substation, which they're trying to get rid of, and actually, if we dismiss the appeal, they can get on with the whole thing and build it properly.
Well, my lord, my submission below, and I make it again, is that it's not at all clear that the developer was trying to get rid of the thirty three kilovolt customer substation.
Just making sure I'm keeping up with you, we're now talking about an additional thirty three kilovolt substation as opposed to the one included in the D N O.
Yes, we are.
Yes, but this is all based upon the new evidence in your client's second witness statement. So far, nothing put before the local authority.
That is, that is where it's all clearly explained.
I want to make sure I've not missed anything.
The judge below had all of this evidence, and it's clear from his judgement that he, he preferred it.
Well, he didn't, he didn't then say, the net effect of my judgement is that the development can now go ahead because you've got the thirty three receiving K V, you've got the one hundred and thirty two K V to put it up into the sky, and now you can build your sending one with the original plans.
Well, that couldn't have been the effect of his judgement, my lord, because, because the twenty twenty one permission D N O compound with its, with its two D N O substations.
Yeah.
Sat, sat, well, that permission sat on the area, not the compound itself, but that permission took over the area in which the thirty three kilovolt developer sender substation had been fixed by the discharge of.
No, I don't follow that, we've been shown the plans, that was to the west of the one three two kilovolt line. The location approved under condition fifteen for the developer thirty three K V substation was to the east.
Yes, yes, my lord.
I don't understand that at all.
My point, my point is that the red line, the red line for the twenty twenty one permission, that covered the area of, the area in which condition fifteen discharge had cited the customer for the developer sender substation, thirty three kilovolt.
Is that because it included an area to the east of the one three two?
Yes.
Which was devoted to solar panels?
There was solar panels and the conservation area.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, my lords have that in the plans.
All of which is very interesting, does that really help us with the legal points?
It, it, it's, it's clearly relevant to the legal points because my learned friends are putting the case on the basis, which I say is impermissible anyway, actually, because I say under section seventy three, one has to look squarely at the previously permitted permission and what's being, what's being proposed. But my learned friends are putting the case on the basis that it actually doesn't matter because there was already the thirty three kilovolt customer substation in the permission that grant, had been granted in twenty twenty one, and the evidence is no, that, that's wrong. The further point, and this relates to this, that part and parcel, and again, it was preferred by the judge, is that in order to get the energy to the grid, one needed all three, as I've explained, the customer sender substation of thirty three K V, the D N O receiver thirty three K V, and the D N O one, one three two K V. The other part of the factual matrix is that essentially, at the same time the council granted this permission, it was arguing in the judicial review of the twenty twenty one mission, that one of the options open to the developer, and this was an important part of its case, was to simply stick with the twenty seventeen permission with nothing else and correct, and connect that directly to a so-called private off-taker. And it could only, could only do that with the developer sender thirty three K V substation, which underlines the importance of this thirty three K V substation yet further, even in, even in that scenario. Now, the next point I make is a mixture of fact and construction. My learned friends have referred to the fact that the twenty twenty two permission does not include a substation as an omission. Respectfully, that is the wrong way to understand and present what has happened here. What it does is by its condition two, it prohibits a substation. It prohibits a substation because, of course, the words, that the grant part of the original permission, twenty seventeen, previously permitted permission, is fixed, that's agreed on all sides under section seventy three, it cannot be altered, so it's, so it's there. But condition two then says that you can only do so in accordance with the following plans, and of course, none of them show the thirty three K V substation or any substation.
But condition two doesn't, I understand what you're saying, it says, if you're implementing this permission, you can aid you so in accordance with these plans, but it doesn't prohibit additional reliance upon a further permission, which you overlay, I mean, that happens commonly in planning.
I, I agree, of course, my lord. The position here is one of stark giving with one hand, taking with the other, bearing in mind always that the grant part of the twenty seventeen permission is fixed under, under section seventy three.
And you say that's unlawful under section seventy three?
I, I, I say it's unlawful under section seventy three as a matter of statutory construction. I also say it's a general principle of sound administration that one cannot rationally give with one hand, take, take with the other, and, and, and that the statutory wording of section seventy three is a fait de fait that because it requires the authority only to look at the conditions. But, but actually, it's the principle of administrative law that would get you home in any event. Now, as my lords know, in order to actually understand the prohibition, it, it does require a paper chase, it requires a paper chase through the plans to actually see, gosh, nowhere do they include this thirty three K V substation, which of course wasn't itself shown on the original plans in twenty seventeen in a location. which of course wasn't itself shown on the original plans in twenty-seventeen in a location. The substation elevations were shown on the DS one hundred drawing. DS one thousand drawing was only discharge of condition fifteen that it came to be shown in a particular location. Again, a matter of mixed facts and interpretation, but the court can please note that nowhere is the twenty-twenty-one permission referred to anywhere in the twenty-twenty-two permission under chat. So there can be no question of somehow incorporating or reading across by reference to it. And as the judge rightly said, respectfully, that twenty-twenty-one permission is not directly relevant to the lawfulness of the section seventy-three power. So those are the points I wish to make on fact. Turning now to the law and beginning with the statutory framework, I advance a number of propositions. The overarching proposition, of course, is that the judge rightly accepted my client's case that conditions under section seventy-three must not conflict with the grant part of that previous planning permission. And I say that's a simple matter of statute interpretation, and it's not novel, and it has strong judicial support. But further and beyond that, what the judge also finds is that if this restriction, which is called restriction one, if it's narrower, if it's restricted to some fundamental conflict or inconsistency with the grant part, then that's also bridged. And the judge finds that power one-three-one through to one-three-three. And there is very clear judicial support against giving with one hand, taking with the other, which is these facts. So even if the opponent somehow succeeds in showing that restriction one should be differently framed, the facts here, the mission still must be quashed under it. So working through the statute, the first proposition I make is that there is, there is a difference between an unconditional grant of planning permission and a conditional grant of planning permission. And allied to that, that's the A, and this is the B, there is a dichotomy between the grant part and the conditions. This runs all the way through the statute, including to the enforcement provisions, which make different breaches of planning control dependent on whether there's development without planning permission or a breach of a condition. And it's a principle that's been accepted by this court more than once. Finney and Wall are both examples of the acceptance of the position set out by Higginbotham and Jersey then was in Cotswold. Grange Country Park, I quote, and it's in my skeleton, the grant identifies what can be done, what is permitted so far as use of land is concerned, whereas conditions identify what can't be done, what is forbidden. So that's the first proposition, A and B to it. The second proposition is that because statutory wording of section seventy-three expressly allows the authority to consider only the conditions, it follows, and this is not in dispute, that the grant part of that previous permission must remain unaltered, and that's, of course, the undoubtedly the ratio, a ratio in Finney. We can, in my submission, draw an important contrast with the position that the authority find itself in when faced with an application under section seventy-three compared to an application under section seventy, when necessarily everything is at large, and the authority may, if it is so minded, grant permission for less than is being applied for, subject to what is generally referred to as the wheat croft test, albeit modified somewhat in Hoban Studios. The numerous cases that the appellant rely upon, starting with Kent, going through Wheatcroft, with the sole exception of the very confusing decision in Kevin Stevens, those cases have nothing whatsoever to do with section seventy-three so far as the appellant's arguments are concerned. They don't assist it. They are all examples of the question of the circumstances in which an authority under section seventy can grant less than is being applied for. And the key point about Wheatcroft, which I will come to, but the key point about Wheatcroft, and this is the knub of Wheatcroft, is it says the development proposed doesn't need to be severable. The question is one a substantial duration, but that is all either by when it comes to my learned friend's argument under section seventy-three. The origins, both the statutory language and the clearly explained purpose of section seventy-three, and it was explained in terms by the circular at the time, which is quoted by Lord Carmouth in Lambeth, and I will go very briefly to that now. But they show that it is there in order to allow a developer to obtain relief from conditions imposed by the local planning authority or by the planning authority that has happened on appeal. It is not there to allow the developer to gain approval for a different development to that, the subject of the original, the previous permission.
Can I at some stage ask that you deal with the question, the grant in this case included subsection, but also included CCTV cameras? If there had been a subsequent application to, as they did under section seventy-three, to take out the CCTV cameras, would that ever have been permissible?
There can be no taking away from the grant, my lord, so whatever example is given.
Well, Mr Justice Lane in a subsequent case called Atwill, following on from Armstrong, said that there could be de minimis changes.
I was going to say.
By de minimis, one means changes which are not legally significant.
Yes, and they're.
That could be less than substantial, but not legally significant.
I.
So the CCTV camera might perhaps.
It might.
Yeah.
If, and looking always at the statute as a whole, the statute provides a mechanism for someone, if they want to change the grant they've been given, but they need, if they want to change the permission they've been given, but they need to change the grant, the mechanism is there for section ninety-six A, but it's for only non-material changes.
Has section seventy-three B come into force yet?
I believe it hasn't, my lord.
No, that's my understanding.
I must admit, I didn't check this morning, but.
And when it does come into force, does it apply to the grant as well as conditions?
I believe it does. We have it in the bundle, in the authorities' bundle.
Yeah, page nineteen.
So and I, it is a necessary corollary of everything I've just said, that one cannot by the conditions subvert the grant because that way one would be going against the clear terms and purpose of section two and three by the back door. So could we please?
Can I, just before you leave that, just put this other proposition? My understanding, and it may be wrong, is that you don't always need to develop the full extent of your grant.
Yes.
So, I mean, why couldn't the developer, in a situation like this, just say, fine, I don't need to get rid of this condition, this by way of an impermissible condition, I'm just not going to build the substation? Because you don't need to develop in accordance with the full grant.
Sorry, my lord, I I haven't quite understood. Is my lord's question directed to?
Well, the whole point is, they don't want to build the substation now because they say they've got it at another point, subject to your client's interesting point about that's not going to work anyway. Regardless of that, as I understand it, it is standard planning law that if they've got a grant, and we're talking about the difference between grants and conditions, if you've got a grant, you don't have to develop to the full extent. I might have a grant for ten houses, I only build five of them, for whatever reason. But if the grant includes a substation, what's wrong with them just building the solar farm, building the substations they've other got subsequent permission for?
Oh, the DNO.
And just not building this particular substation?
Yes, the difficulty that the developer faced here is due to a very longstanding principle from a case called Pilkington.
Yeah.
Which was obitidicta of law justice Widgery that has recently been affirmed by the Supreme Court in Hillside, but the gap between the two was such, it's almost as if part of the industry at least had almost forgotten about the Pilkington principle. And the basic principle, and the reason developer here found itself in needing to do this, is that one cannot continue building out under a permission if there's another permission that's also been started. And physically, one cannot build out both. So even if one hasn't yet reached the point at which literally physical objects are butting up against each other, if it would be physically impossible to build out all the way due to that incompatibility, then one can't proceed. And the developer here, because of that, because of, because the permission it got in twenty-twenty-one is physically incompatible if fully built out with the twenty-seventeen permission.
As regards the thirty-three KV substation?
Yes.
The twenty-seventeen permission was not location specific for that.
No.
Instead, the location was to be determined under applications pursuant to condition.
Yes.
And the case law says you can make any number of applications.
Yes.
So I'm not sure I see how we need to get into incompatibility and Pilkington.
I hope, I hope we wouldn't. I'm trying to.
I don't think it helps answer my lord's question.
Well, my lord, the developer here, it couldn't, yes, it could, as my lord Holgate says, it could have gone back and tried to have another go at discharging the condition fifteens, the twenty-seventeen permission, putting the thirty-three KV developer sender substation in a different place. It could have done that, but it was working on the basis that because it had physically incompatible twenty-twenty-one permission, physically compatible with the twenty-seventeen permission, it needed this permission in order to remove that physical incompatibility, which is why it was trying to clear the whole space in the middle of the twenty-seventeen planning permission.
Thank you.
That makes sense.
It certainly makes sense.
I said I wanted to go to Lambeth. Please, could I go to Lambeth? Because Lambeth is at tab sixteen, and we should only need, having looked at it already, and my lord Holgate reminded everyone of what it was actually about, we should only, in my submission, actually need to look now at paragraphs nine through to eleven, explaining the origins, the purpose, and the limits of section seventy-three. And I'm not sure my lords were invited to read the entirety of the sideline passage. I'm not necessarily suggesting we do so now.
I think we have read it, but if there's anything you want us to concentrate on, do take us to it.
So the first point is this. It was the purpose of section seventy-three that it enabled the developer to obtain relief from conditions imposed. And that was explained in the contemporary circular. The word relief was expressly used. What section seventy-three does is very clearly captured in that paragraph eleven. And the words that I invite the court to look at are not just that description of obtaining that relief, but in the second sentence, a permission under section seventy-three can only take effect as an independent permission to carry out the same development as previously permitted. And those words, the same development as previously permitted, are the words that Lord Justice Lewison underlines in Finney when he quotes from, and rightly so. It was, the contemporary circular made clear was it was not the intention to allow one to advance seat permission for a different development. It's about obtaining relief from conditions imposed by the local planning authority. Now, this is all why one cannot have, under section seventy-three, conditions that subvert the grant part. That is going against the purpose and the language of the section by the back door. And that's all apparent just on the face of the principal act, the nineteen ninety act. But the submission gets even stronger when one considers the requirements of the Development Management Procedure Order, which the judge, and he refers to these in the judgment. The Development Management Procedure Order makes various requirements of different types of planning permission. What is notable about the requirements it sets out for section seventy-three is that they dilute the requirements imposed on a full application under section seventy in a way that makes clear there's no expectation that a different development is being sought, both by removing requirements for such as a design and access statement or a fire statement, and by reducing the consultation requirements. I've set out a run of the different provisions in my skeleton argument. I don't propose to go through them, my lords, unless my lords feel it's actually helpful and necessary that I do so, say that. That is absolutely clear. And what all those requirements show again is that section seventy-three is not for someone to seek permission for a different development. Now, everything that I have said respectfully has strong support in the case law. I've taken my lords to Lambeth. My lords have already been to Finney. I will go back to Finney briefly. But also, beyond this, the principle, even if one stepped away from section seventy-three, and it's very limited wording, that word only, the principle that even under a full application under section seventy, the authority cannot grant through the grant part permission for something and then take away from that by condition is established on the authorities, and that's cadogan. And that cadogan principle, which I will very shortly talk to, is not one that's based on the extent of the conflict between grant part and condition. The final proposition I make, which I will expand on in due course, is that restriction one does not create confusion or. um, restriction one does not create confusion or, or, or is capricious um, or inimical to good planning, as the appelleant says. Actually, it's quite the contrary when one stands, understands the statutory scheme correctly, because everyone, both the applicant and the public are entitled to proceed on the basis that a section seventy-three permission will not be changing the originally permitted development. It's my learned friend's proposal, of course, that throws everything into a state of total uncertainty on that front. Um, all the, all these rather interorum arguments that my learned friend's advances were all considered by the court in Finney and, and rejected. Um, so could I, could I go first then? I've been to Lambeth, could I go to Cadogan, please? Um, and I'm not, I'm not sure why Cadogan sits where it does in the authorities' bundle, it's not in chronological order. As my lords would have noted, it's a nineteen ninety-two decision, so it comes about eight years before Arrocroft. Um, the first point to note about Cadogan, which my lord Holgate has already made, is that the grant, as, as the Court of Appeal construed it, the grant in Cadogan, this is tab nine, the grant in Cadogan, um, and this is clear from page four eleven of the report, that very first paragraph, Law Justice Glybosh's judgment, the grant included that restoration was to be using onsite materials. And it's quite clear that that is, um, the, um, way the Court of Appeal interpreted the grant. Um, the condition, my lords have already looked at that, um, at page four thirteen. And my lords have been taken to the principle set out immediately below the condition. It is established law that a condition on a planning permission will not be valid if it alters the extent or indeed the nature of the development permitted. That principle is not qualified in any way, as my learned friends would suggest, by, um, by, by anything, by substantial, by fundamental a- a- at all. And the fact is that the words, "the extent" or indeed "the nature", make clear that it is not qualified. A condition must not alter the extent or indeed the nature of the grant part. And it's quite clear from the judgment that by development permitted is meant the grant part. Um, and it's the ratio contrary to what my learned friend said. It, it is the ratio here because that's the basis on which the Court of Appeal reject ground of appeal one in that case.
So which, which passage do you say is the ratio?
The principle that I've just, I've just quoted. It is established law that a condition on the-
So on one, two, two, yeah.
O- on, on, on page four, one, three, or, or bundle page one, two, two. And one can see that i- it's the ratio from the concluding part of this, this discussion of this ground of appeal, which runs through to, um, page four fifteen, where i- it is found that the the condition does not offend that principle. What, what, and indeed, if something came forward by way of a restoration scheme that involved offsite materials, that would necessarily be outside the condition because it's to be read with the, with the grant. Um, and, um, re- respectfully, the judge below set out his understanding for Cadogan, um, it's at page, perhaps fifty-nine, sixty-one, and it can't be, it can't be faulted. Um, now, my learned friends describe this principle as vague and in their skeleton, they give an example of a, of a time limit condition, which they say, well, that's a very common condition, of course, it's, um, a- and, and, and that, and that necessarily alters, that necessarily alters the, the grant part. Well, it doesn't, that's, that's wrong. And, and my lord Holgate, um, as my lord Holgate said, if the grant part of a permission, if the grant part said, "I give you, I, I permission, we give you permission to, to, to operate this thing for, for twenty years", and the condition said, "But you must only operate this thing for ten years", there would be a, a clear altering of the grant, an inconsistency would be unlawful. But if the grant part just says, "I give you permission for this thing", and the condition says, "You can only operate it for ten years", that's fine. Not altering the extent or nature of the grant. Um, so that, I, I'd say is a, it's a, it's a bad point and the other a- analogous points that my learned friend made are, are, are equally, equally bad. Um, the, 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 the high point of my learned friend's case here, that, that the principle in Cadogan is, is, is vague, um, can only be one that actually doesn't help it in this case anyway because we have the clearest possible conflict between the grant part giving permission for a substation and the condition to, to the twenty twenty-two commission prohibit, with the effect of which is to prohibit. So i- if, 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 if anything, the most it does is lead to a refining of restriction one. It doesn't actually get the appellate part. Um, now, in terms of the order I propose to take the many cases in, I propose to briefly canter, and it will be a canter, through the cases started with, starting with Kent and then Weecroft, to, to just show, my lords, that they are simply cases about granting less than was applied for, not about a condition that conflicts with the grant part. And, and I, I, I'll try to be very, very brief about that. So could, could my lords please, could we go first to Kent?
Yep.
Which is our very first authority, under tab four. And
Thank you.
What, um, if my lords please, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm going to go to the judgment itself rather than the head act, um, report page seventy-three. My lords will please see that what was proposed was an oil refinery and jetty with a, a ancillary activities. There were originally two applications, oil refinery and jetty with ancillary activities. The other is a road rail terminal facilities and ancillary pipelines and roadways. That, that was then made to one application. Um, or rather, the local authority was asked to treat the two application forms as constituting one application. Um, the Secretary of State then called this in to determine it. And in the large paragraph at the bottom of page seventy-three, my lords will see that what the Secretary of State, Secretary of State did, departing from the inspector, but the Secretary of State decided that the national interest, it was in the national interest that additional refinery capacity be made available. Um, nevertheless, he recognized the road system was inadequate and he had it in mind to refuse permission for the construction of the access road as proposed in the application and to grant outline planning permission for the oil refinery. And the other, and the other bit. And, um, what then happened at page seventy-four, we see that on December thirty-first, nineteen seventy-five, the first one granted planning permission on the lines previously stated. So the first and crucial to take regarding Kent is it, it was for a grant part that was less than the application proposed. But that was supported by a condition that, subject to some minor exceptions, prohibited delivery by road. But Kent does not assist, my learned friends, with their argument that conditions can conflict with a grant. The grant part cut down and removed the road bit of the application. So that's, that's, that's Kent. Now, the other point to take from Kent, which you will see clearly in, in Weecroft, my lords have already seen, is that Kent, it was argued that the Secretary of State couldn't have done that, couldn't have granted less. Um, the Deputy High Court Judge in Kent decided that it was acceptable lawful, the Secretary, for the Secretary of State, who granted less than was applied for because the application was severable. Now, um, when we move, and I'm going to, because I need to take these at a look, when we move on to Weecroft, um, as, as, as I say, my lord, the Weecroft is another case about the ability to grant less than is applied for. It's not a case about whether a condition can conflict with the grant part. And what Weecroft decides, the ratio of Weecroft, the Secretary of State there had decided that he couldn't, he couldn't entertain, um, an, a, an amended version of a proposal for fewer houses than were actually on the application. Couldn't entertain it because it wasn't a severable application. And the point of Weecroft, point of judgment of Mr. Justice Forbes in Weecroft, is that severability, the severability of the development was the wrong test. The right test was, is what's being proposed a substantial alteration of the application? What was proposed in the, in the application? Um, and what the judgment discusses, and it does so, um, we, we can see at two, three, six foot, the judge identifies the real question in this case. And we can see, um, that there's lengthy explanation, but, um, when we get, please, and my, my lords have already been taken to parts of this, um, when we get to, um, page two forty, we can, we can see the discussion of Kent. Um, and then we see, and this is the note, the words, for my part, if my lords can see that, for my part, I cannot accept the proper test is whether the development proposed in the application was severable or not. And we get to the result must not be substantially different from the development applied for. That's, that's the Weecroft principle, but a- a- at no, at no point, a- anywhere, um, is this judgment discussing circumstances in which condition might conflict with the grant part. Not about that. And that, and that, of course, is, is how Weecroft has rightly always been understood. It's always been understood, a setting limit on the extent to which the developer can amend its application while its planning application is still, is still live. And that, of course, is, is, is guided by, um, largely guided by fair consultation, but, but not, not completely by that. And it's discussed in some detail in, in the Hogan Studios case. Um, now, um, the somewhat out of sequence, and apologies for doing it this way, but we are in Weecroft. Um, I'd like to address my learned friend's criticisms of what Justice Lewison says in Finney about Weecroft at, at this, at this stage. Um, and I hope, I hope that's a convenient way to do it. And if not, my lords will, will tell me. But, um, my lords will recall that, can we turn to Finney, please? So that's, um, tab seventeen. The um, uh, report page four, six, one, paragraph forty-one. The, um, the respondents in, in Finney supported their submissions, which were, of course, that there is no restriction one, that there's only a fundamental alteration restriction two by reference to Weecroft. And Law Justice Lewison gives a, a, a number of, a number of reasons. Uh, he, he says there are four points being made about that decision. And my learned friends take, take issue with those, with those points. Uh, now, taking them in turn, first, it was not concerned with a statutory revision such as section seventy-three, which expressly restricts that which a planning authority may consider. That's plainly wrong. Section seventy-three explicitly restricts what a planning authority may consider to only the conditions by contrast to a section seventy, where everything is at large, including crucially, the words of grant. So that distinction is unimpeachable, as is the second reason, which is misunderstood by the appelleant. Second, it was concerned with an ongoing application rather than with what, a granted planning permission which gave rise to legal rights to carry out development. That's the point. What the appelleant misses is ongoing application. Everything was at large. There was no issue, no point about a conflict between a fixed grant and a condition. If, if hypothetically, in Weecroft, what had happened was that the inspector had granted permission on the application for the four hundred and thirty-odd houses, but then by condition had said, "Actually, you can only develop to the two hundred and odd houses you've said is your alternative scheme", there clearly would have been an issue to be addressed by Mr. Justice Forbes regarding inconsistency between condition and grant. That wasn't, that wasn't the case. Um, the third point, um, is clearly correct, um, didn't concern reduction of permitted development, but, um, and the fourth, the fourth point, now, the fourth point, is there a difference between in substance and fundamental alteration? Well, there's certainly a difference between a test of no substantial difference with the application being made and a test of no fundamental alteration of development that's already been permitted. But taking those words in isolation, substantial difference and fundamental alteration, I accept maybe there isn't such a difference b- b- between them. Um, in any of them, um, thank you for that, um, diversion in, in, into Finney, just to clear tho- those points up. Um, the various other cases my learned friends rely on, they, they rely on Wessex, they rely on Wadehurst. Again, these are all cases simply concerned with the Weecroft principle, granting permission for less than being applied for.
I thought in your skeleton you were submitting
Yes.
that, um, as a matter of practice, there are a few conditions which wouldn't be regarded as fundamental to the permission, which struck me as being arguably correct.
I'm s- I do apologize, my lord.
I, I thought in your skeleton you were making the submission that most conditions attached to permission are of fundamental importance to the permission. You can test it this way.
Yeah.
There's case law on severability, if a condition is held to be invalid, the court can only sever the invalid condition as opposed to quashing the permission as a whole. If it's satisfied, the condition is not fundamental, go, doesn't go to the root of the permission. Most conditions do.
They do.
So there is a difference between fundamentality and matters of substance.
And matters of substance.
I thought that was a case you were presenting to us.
Well, I'm, I'm presenting the case that there's certainly a difference between a test of fundamental alteration
Yeah.
uh, 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 under section seventy-three and a, and a test of no substantial difference in application.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I'm not, I'm not going to take, my lords, to, to Wessex and Wadehurst to make good on what I've said because it's clear they are simply concerned with granting less than have been applied for. And they don't, they don't help, my learned friends. Um, Ho- Hoban Studios is, uh, is a case I will go to briefly. Um, Hoban Studios in this, in this run of cases.
Divider.
That's, um, that's tab fifteen.
Thank you.
And, um, again, this, this was about, uh, uh, as, as my lords can see from the headnote, this was about an amendment to a live application, an undetermined application. The, the, the consultation on which had gone completely wrong because it seems that no one had actually been consulted on what was quite a substantial change to what had originally been proposed i- in, in the application. But, um, that, that's what the case was about. And, um, what my learned friends rely on Hoban Studios for is this run of paragraphs that begins at report page one zero fifteen and begins at paragraph sixty-four. There are three ways in which a planning permission may be granted. For, and you need to read above that to see, development other than that for which an application was originally made. The initial application may itself be amended. Permission may be granted only for part of the development applied for. And permission may be granted subject to a condition that modifies the development applied for. There's nothing controversial about any of that, and at no point is the Deputy High Court Judge here discussing a situation in which a condition conflicts with the grant part, uh, which runs all the way through these paragraphs. Um, the, the reason, um, I understand my own friends place some particular reliance on Hoban Studios, at least in their written arguments, is because, um, of, of, of what it's, what is said at, um, paragraph sixty-seven. And, um, reading down the page, we see, um, um, the so-called Wheatcroft principle is that the result imposed such a condition must not be a development which in substance is not that which, which was applied for. See, burnt Wheatcroft. Thus, on an application for planning permission without complying with conditions subject to which a previous planning permission is granted under section seventy-three, the authority may impose different conditions, but only if they are conditions which could have norfully been imposed on the original grant of planning permission in the sense that they do not amount to a fundamental alteration of the proposal put forward in the original application. Um, and, and, and citing Arecroft and wet finishing work. Um, what, um, the Deputy High Court Judge firstly is not, is not saying, is that, well, one can nonetheless impose a condition that conflicts with the grant part, not saying that at all. Um, equally, he is relying upon wet finishing works, which we know this court expressly disapprove of in Finney. Because wet finishing works was a case in which this justice, as he then was, held that there is only this restriction to test, only the restriction to test of fundamental alteration that, that limits what can be done under section seventy-three. So Hoban Studios doesn't assist for those two, doesn't assist the appellant for those, for those two reasons. Um, which brings us to Kevin Stevens. But, um, and that requires us to flip back a few pages. Um, but, and the points have already been made regarding Kevin Stevens. So that's tab, that's tab twelve. Um, Kevin Stevens, the relevant argument, we see it paragraph seven, Little Roman one. And it was put on the basis that the planning permission was unclear. Uh, and, and it was wondrously unreasonable in its face as it didn't grant planning permission the excavation of that caving trench route to the south. Um, and, and the point is then further explained at paragraphs thirty, paragraph thirty-six, in particular. And for reasons, uh, well, it is clear in my submission that firstly, Cadogan is not counted, is not considered in Kevin Stevens. Um, which is, of course, yet another section seventy case is not a section seventy-three case. And Kevin Stevens is per incuriam, Cadogan.
So you, you say it was wrongly decided?
It was wrongly decided, but in, in, in fairness to Mrs Justice
Patterson, yeah.
Restler, um, in fairness, the case was not run. It was not, was not only not run for the claimer on the basis that Cadogan was identified and the principle was identified. It, it wasn't even by some happy chance run on that same principle basis without, without citing Cadogan. It was, it was run on the base, on, on other bases. Not that there is unlawfulness because you have here granted a condition that conflicts with the grant part of the, of the permission. And that, and that is irrational, that you cannot do that as a matter of good administration. It wasn't put on that basis. The way it was, way it was being put is, it's all, it's all very unclear. Mrs Justice Patterson said, well, it's not unclear. I can read the permission and it, it tells me clearly what's going on.
So it, it, it might have been right on the way it was argued, but not establishing any principle.
Yes, absolutely. So, and, and Kevin Stevens, my lords, is the only case. It's the only case my learned friends can point to in however many years of this litigation now, in which they, they, they could say, ah, there is a condition that conflicts with the grant part and which the, which, and, and yet the court upheld the planning permission.
Well, that, I mean, one reason why we may not have had those cases, which I, I did ask you about, is because you don't have to develop in accordance with your, for grant of permission. So there's no need to go back to, to the local authority and say, get rid of the condition because you don't have to, to build it.
Oh, oh, my lord, another reason is that it's, it's so well, the Cadogan principle is, is clear court of appeal authority, very well recognised. And, and as a matter of basic administrative law, it's recognised. You can't grant with one hand, take, take away with the other.
I appreciate that, but, I mean, if one looks at the principle, which is you, you, it conflicts with the operative wording of the original permission. When they've removed the condition about how the substation is to be built, you've still got the original grant of permission, which includes a substation. So why is that, um, conflicting with the original wording of the grant?
Apologies, my lord, I should have, I should have made this clear. Um, uh, uh, under, under section seventy-three,
Yeah.
the, the grant part of a section seventy-three permission must, and this is Finney, this, this is clearly ratio Finney. It must be exactly what was granted originally.
Absolutely.
It's the same, it, it's exactly the same grant part.
You can't scratch out any of the wording.
You can't scratch out any of the wording.
But, but, eh, even without scratching out any of the wording, a developer is always entitled not to develop to the full extent.
Yes.
And if you then remove a condition about how, um, a bit of the, um, grant part is going to be carried out, it's not removed any of the grant part because, um, if the developer wants to, to develop, he'll have to come back? Or is that wrong?
That's, um, well, my lord, could, could I, could I make sure that on the facts of this case, we are, we, we are, or at least we are properly understanding each other? I, 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 I'm worried I might not be. On, on the facts of this case, the grant part of the twenty-twenty-two permission must be taken to be identical to the twenty-seventeen.
Absolutely.
And, and if there, if there were any suggestion, uh, and, and, and there might well be suggestion that the local authority had altered that grant part, Finney tells us, well, that is, that is unlawful.
Yep.
Um, ag- against, against myself, against the claimer, we have proceeded on the basis that the grant part is not actually altered. But clearly conditioned to, to the twenty-twenty-two permission because it only allows, only allows one to build out in accordance with those plans. Prohibits, amongst other things, but it prohibits the building out of the substation that forms part of the grant of this twenty-twenty-two permission.
But in the twenty-twenty-two permission, there is the seven point six acres which is excised.
That, yes, that is right.
We in fact know, um, that, that, that's where the substation was going to be built. So it, why is there a fundamental inconsistency with the original grant? Or a, a substantial inconsistency?
Well, well, my lord, the section seventy-three permission is a standalone permission.
Yeah.
And I, and I made the point, and I make it again, it, it, it doesn't incorporate in any way the twenty-twenty-one D and O compound permission, in any way. It has to work, it has to stand on its own two feet when we are interpreting it and applying the limits that are explained in Finney on section seventy-three. The section seventy-three permission of twenty-twenty-two has a grant part that gives permission for a substation.
Well, you, you keep saying that, could we actually go to the documents, please?
Yes.
Because it was accepted, um, by the appellant this morning that the grant does not include a substation. Page two, three, nine of the core bundle. The substation is referred to in the proposal section. The proposal section is not the grant. The grant starts beneath the words date registered. In pursuit, local planning authority hereby grants permission for the above development in accordance with the approved plans. And it's the approved plans which do not include a substation, which when you add that in with the, the text means that you're, they're not in fact approving, um, granting permission for a substation.
Well, my lord, on that basis, there's an even clearer clash with Finney, self-evidently. I, 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 the, the claimant's always taken the
Because, forgive me, just for interrupting, but even if you go back to the twenty-seventeen permission, it starts off, it's the same pattern, it's got a proposal. And then the grant follows, and it says, will we grant in accordance with above development and the plans which follow? It's just that in that case, the plans, on one reading, do allow for a substation. So there's no incompatibility with the text above referring to a substation. Here, as I understand your case, because the plans don't show a substation, they form part of the grant, the grant does not cover a substation. Simplicity. So I, I think what my lord's putting to you, isn't this in fact just a, a Finney case? It's not inconsistency with conditions, actually properly analysed, what they've granted is missing the substation. And then you don't need to get into the fact that the developer cannot develop a, um, a, a, um, a substation if he chooses not to.
But that, that is all absolutely right and correct. And, and, and on that interpretation of permission, I, I gratefully adopt the, the, the reasoning. Um, it, it had been put, argued below on a ultra cautious basis because the, um, against myself perhaps, but because there is this word, um, uh, these words for the above development after the word hereby grants for planning permission.
For the above development.
For the above development, which refers
And that, that's
back to the twenty-seventeen.
So that does include the substation.
Which does, which does include a substation. But it, but clearly
Then if it's, that's the way you're reading it. When you then come to the condition which shows you what the plans are, which you must adhere to, there's an inconsistency between that condition and the grant.
Exactly, my lord. So, uh, uh, in my submission, whatever way one interprets this permission, it is unlawful.
I suppose the reason, though, the way I, I'd sought to put it first when I missed ago, is that is, if, when I asked the question, what is it about the first permission which, uh, authorises or requires a thirty-three KV substation? It's only by reading the grant words with the proposal and the plans that you get the answer, thirty-three KV substation.
Yes.
So I was just simply following the same pattern of analysis.
That's right.
If you're comparing the, after all,
Yes.
it is right to compare, isn't it, the two documents? Because this is a section seventy-three application, which relates to the twenty-seventeen permission.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And sorry to ask one further question, just while we're at the end of your submissions on, on, on bits of so your, your short point is that if they wanted to do what they have done, they had to do it under section seventy?
Uh, yes, um, and, and there hasn't been a suggestion that it could ever have been done under section ninety-six A.
No.
Now, may I turn to, turn to, well, should go to Arecroft and then go to Finney? Um, but when going to, when going to Arecroft, can I make this point? That it, it, it is clear from Finney, and my lords have already looked at the concluding paragraph forty-two on my table.
Sorry, sorry to go back, just while we're trying to draw the strings together. Uh, both the twenty-seventeen permission and the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two permission are full permissions.
Yes.
So there we have the decision of the Court of Appeal in, was it, um, was it Barnley? I can't remember, it's Lord Justice, um, Keane, which says, when you're construing a full plan permission, unlike an outward plan permission, you don't have to incorporate the plans by reference. There are certain drawings which are part of the permission. Otherwise, it wouldn't make sense, it's a full permission. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, e- e- indeed.
So that would tend to support at least reading in the layout plans, but arguably also, yeah.
Uh, 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 arguably all, all, all of the drawings.
Especially for the purposes of the criminal law, because if you
Yeah, yeah.
act impreachably,
Yeah.
you, you might end up in front of the courts, criminal courts, who need to know what to look at.
Yeah, there, there, there is, um, there, there is a, I've put it this way, my lord, there is a live, there is a live question, which I raised below, but I didn't need to pursue because it was so clearly stated, substation and DS five hundred on the face of the twenty-seventeen permission. There, there is a live issue, which the Deputy High Court Judge in Armstrong, I say, heavily hints at. And he almost invited the parties to argue it, but no one took up the invitation, as to whether or not the grant part the, of a full permission includes as the grant part all, all of, all of the plans and drawings. Um, and just to follow that through, so that, so that therefore, and this really shows how, would show how limited section seventy-three is and make absolutely sure one can only, can only have the same permitted development under section seventy-three. Therefore, under section seventy-three, because the previously permitted development on a full application is, is, is set out on all those drawings, it, it, it shows you can only, under section seventy-three, be, be altering conditions that impose whatever limitations there, there are. But I, but I didn't need to go there below because it's so clearly stated, substation DS.
Well, perhaps one thing that's left open, open from Lord Justice Keane's dictum, just how far that goes.
It, it is.
You're leaving a side section.
Leaving a side section, and that, and that, to my knowledge, is never
For another day.
It's for another day, it's never entirely been answered deliberately so. Um, And
So where are we going now?
We're we're going, well, we're going, we're going to Arecroft, but in introducing Arecroft.
Thank you.
Make this point about, is it tab eight?
Tab.
A tab eight of the front of this bundle, this point about Arecroft and um and indeed also view entertainment, which has it it it's, which is that it's clear from Finney that that this court's conclusions in Finney are founded on statutory interpretation. They are not statute interpretation and and the the Caddogan principle in in section seventy cases applied across. They're they're not founded on whether or not Lord Justice Lewison is absolutely right or slightly wrong in what he understands. Mr. Justice Sullivan have been saying in Arecroft and and Mr. Justice Collins to be saying in 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 view. So that that's to give some some context. Um. Arecroft, the the points that in in my submission, my lord, your friends have missed, and that this court did not miss, even though not every relevant paragraph in Arecroft is set out in Finney, but but the the points that were were not missed. Um. Start um at at paragraph twenty three with the applicant's submissions. And i- i- it's clear in my submission that the applicant, we see this over the page. Um, the applicant was putting the case on the basis that the um new conditions, uh there's the section seventy three with its new conditions created and fundamental inconsistency with the grant part. Now, the word used is fundamental, that in my submission is a, it's a, it's a, it's a gloss on the facts. But my point is that the applicant submissions were put on the basis, this is a case about inconsistency with the grant. Inconsistent between the grant and submission and and the conditions. It it wasn't, the applicant wasn't on the basis. This is a case about the application of the Wheatcroft principle, it was a different point being made.
Do you do you say any inconsistency is enough?
Uh, my lord, beyond de minimis, back to my lord Holgate's point, beyond de minimis, yes, that is the Caddogan principle in my submission. Yeah. But in this, the facts of my case here, it doesn't really matter because prohibiting this substation, that was the 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 key thing that was in twenty seventeen going to connect this thing to the grid. And remained the key thing that in twenty twenty two was going to allow this thing to connect to a private off taker. Clearly went sore above any de minimis bar anything or anything like that. And then this is a clear case of giving with one hand, taking with the other. So it's not a case around the edges. Um, now, what um, Mr. Justice Sullivan said under my conclusion. He took, he took this part of the encyclopedia, which is concerned with the Wheatcroft principle. Not concerned with section seventy three and questions about whether or not conditions can or cannot conflict with the grant part. He took with the Wheatcroft principle as as a starting point. The defendants had been telling him that that it had nothing to do with with this. He took it as a starting point, but he didn't take it as a finishing point. And and what he then did over the following paragraphs is he made points that in my submission are correctly identified by Lord Justice Lewison in Finney as different points. One, and we see this at paragraph thirty three, the top half of that paragraph. One being about inconsistency between the conditions and the grant part. The other being about not fundamentally altering the proposal put forward in the original application, which we see at the bottom of paragraph thirty three. And then, I'm at page one, two, two of the report. And then at paragraph thirty five, which is page one, two, three of the report, he comes back to the fundamental point, which I say is the point of administrative law and the and his restriction, is is a restriction one point. That the op- the variation is the effect that the operative part of new planning permission gives permission for one variety store on the one hand. But the new planning permission by the revised.
But if you were Marks and Spencer's and you'd asked for a planning permission for one variety store so you could occupy it. And back comes the decision notice saying, here's a planning permission for six variety stores. You would think, uh, sorry, there is a permission for one variety store, but the condition says you can only have six uh smaller units, you would say that you've not been given your planning permission.
Yes, and and.
Or you've been given a planning permission with an inconsistent provision.
It's it it, yes, it's inconsistent.
But normally, thinking about it, these cases like Wheatcroft, where a local authority's some done something, put something different from the application, is in a consensual situation, where the applicant says, please, if you don't accept forty houses, give me thirty.
Yes.
But even that is dealt with consensually by looking looking at what the public, how they would respond to that.
Yes, yes, indeed, indeed. By exactly the same token, as as my lord put to my left friend, Mr. Green. This is, this is the way one must approach the lawfulness of the section seventy three permission under challenge. If in twenty seventeen, the authority had granted with the grant part we've looked at, but imposed a condition saying you can't have a substation. That would have been unlawful, flat, a clear inconsistency, um variation of the grant part. And exactly that same, that same scenario applied when it was considering what conditions to impose in twenty twenty two. There is, there is no, as a matter of law, there is no difference. Um, so Arecroft identifies two different points. Now, um, there's no, and and there's no doubt in my submission, and now we come to Finney, please. Um.
Fin- Finney.
Now Finney, yes, please.
Which is divider.
Which is divider seventeen.
Yep.
Um, and there is no, there is no natural that at paragraph twenty nine, um. Where Lord Justice Lewison is 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 referring to parts that I've just taken the call to from Arecroft. When he says, the two passages he sets out above are in my judgment dealing with different things. The first deals with the imposition of conditions on the grant of a planning permission, the second deals with the conflict in the opposite part of the finishing and conditions attached to it, that is correct. Um, not, as I say, in any event, that this is some um fundamental pillar upon which the Court of Appeal's judgment in Finney rests, because it is. Now, um, points, if I may, I wish to make about Finney are very help, um, the first one is very helpfully illuminated by the um first instance judgment that um my lord Holgate called for. But if we could just stick um with the Court of Appeal um report of page four, five, seven, just 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 to see. This is um, four, five, seven, top is the head node. Um, and um, my lords will see, by an opponent's notice um, and and so on, the claimant appealed on the ground that the judge had heard in holding that section seventy three of the nineteen ninety act might be used to vary the terms of the operative part of a planning permission. Now that, a- and and that was the ground of appeal. The reason that matters is because when we come and recall my learned friend's submissions regarding paragraph forty three of Finney. Which they are inviting my lords to read as not in fact an application of restriction one. But in the same way as they invited my lords to read words into the Caddogan principle, they're inviting my lords to read that all that paragraph forty three is saying is that, well, one cannot substantially depart from or or fundamentally depart from words of words of grant. And that um, that is not only wrong on the face of what paragraph forty three is is saying. But it can be shown to be wrong because um of the narrowness of the ground of appeal, which we can then see and understand from the judgment of Sir Wynn Williams below, because, and I'm not sure when my laws have that first instance.
It was handed up with the um uh maps this morning.
Thank you very much. Um. What my lord will see from, my lords will see from paragraph one is that the way things were put below was that the inspector picking up from the middle of the paragraph, um, and I know that my lord Holgate remember this better than, so I don't remember it. Um, but um, what um was argued below is this firstly, the inspector had no power under section seventy three to amend a condition um, of due to which prior permission had been granted, which had the effect of directly contradicting the description of the element permitted. And then there was a further alternative argument um concerning whether the application was a fundamental alteration of the prior permission. And as regards that second argument, what Sir Wynn Williams found um and we can pick this up, his discussion starts at par- paragraph thirty six. Um. What he, what what he found in relation to that is at um paragraph forty three, forty two and forty three, where he turns to consider that fundamental alteration. And he he finds that in actual fact, the inspector did, it was implicit that the inspector did consider whether it was a fundamental alteration and implicit that she decided it wasn't a fundamental fundamental alteration. And popper bottom there, even if she hadn't, he found that under section thirty one of the Senior Courts Act, it would have made no difference, because that's what she would have found. So he was finding himself that the change from a hundred metres to a hundred twenty five metre turbine tip wasn't a fundamental alteration. And the reason I'm taking my lords to that is, is we can see from that, it was argued below, that it didn't go up to the Court of Appeal. And so.
So in fact, and was, it doesn't appear that the background on which the appeal was allowed was even argued before him?
So, no, a- and and so when understanding paragraph forty three, it it must be the case that that paragraph is not predicated on any argument, let alone finding that that the 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 change, the inconsistency was somehow fundamental. It's purely and simply these words, a conditioning, a condition altering the nature of what was permitted would have been unlawful. And that, as I say, is a reference straight back to Caddogan, which um Lord Justice Lewson discussed at paragraph fifteen. Um.
But then you've got to decide what is altering the nature of the development. I mean, is it requiring solar panels to be put on the top of a house altering it?
Well, my lord, on the facts, on the facts of this case, my submission is one doesn't need to decide because it's so clear that the mission is by the grant part given for a substation, but it's prohibited by conditions.
So that that's why, because I can't just mean that a- anything is enough. And I I I mean, he didn't, it wasn't a situation of anything being enough, it was quite a fundamental change in that case.
In 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 Caddogan, there will always be de minimis, yeah, de minimis exceptions, absolutely. Um, so, and my lords have have asked various questions about the the ratio of Finney so far as relevant in this case. Well, um, one, one point that clearly is ratio is that this court rejected the argument run for the defendants in that case. Um, and this is um set out at paragraph thirty nine. Quotes that the only limitation on the power of the planning authority on an application under section seventy three was that it could not introduce a condition that made a fundamental alteration to the permitted development. That that argument, which was the argument that prevailed in wet finishing, which the first instance judge in Finney followed, followed wet finishing, that that is clearly rejected by this court.
Sorry, what is clearly rejected?
The the ar- the argument that the only limitation, my lord, on section seventy three is that the, one mustn't introduce a condition that's a quote fundamental alteration. That 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 is, that is rejected.
And you take that from paragraph?
I I take, I take that from um the court's rejection, well, first of all, it's overturning of the first instance decision, which followed wet finishing.
Yeah.
Second, it it it's clear rejection of wet finishing.
Yeah, are you looking at forty six?
It's forty six.
Yes.
It's forty six and.
When I, when I read forty six, I looked to find out what was the difference between Collins J and View and Singh J and wet finishing.
Yeah.
And that's explained by Wynn Williams in paragraphs thirty six to thirty nine of um his judgment.
Of his judgment.
And where there seems to be a difference is that Collins J was accepting that any inconsistency would prevent section seventy three from being relied upon.
Yes.
That that's, so in other words, when you read this as a whole, the Court of Appeal is projecting um a limitation of the use of um section seventy three to fundamental alterations.
Yes, yes, that and that is my submission. And 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 the reason that that there is this, to the extent that Singh J held otherwise.
Yes.
Is i- i- it's it's because there is a a lack of clarity in wet finishing.
Well, i- i- insofar as there is a difference, Mr. Justice Singh, he then was, appeared to be accepting the fundament- fundamental alteration test. Which is why Mr. Justice Wynn Williams then set about dealing with that very too.
Yes, exactly.
And to be fair, was argued in front of him on the basis that it was fundamental alteration.
Yes, paragraph thirty five.
Yes, yes, in in indeed, yes, um, yes to all of that. Um, yeah. So.
So where are we now?
So, we are now, um, with me having made my submissions to the effect that restriction one exists on the statute, it's clearly supported by the by the authorities. And I I'm not going to take to take time going to Reed and Armstrong, which are also in the bundle. First instance cases that of course follow wet, follow Finney, do independently, both of them very much affirm the restriction one, no question about in my, in my submission. Um, but um, there there, there just isn't time to do that. Um, I now need to deal with the appellant's argument that restriction one um is capricious, leads to bad planning, um and 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 so on and and so on and so forth. Now, um, we can see exactly the same, essentially same arguments rejected in Finney um, uh, uh, paragraph um forty. Um. The appellant's submissions are the opposite, they are the opposite of practical, they are a recipe for confusion. What what they would have authorities do is grant permissions under section seventy three that contradict the fixed words of grant. Inevitably causing confusion for at least the public, potentially even for the applicant. Because the public, and I've taken my lords through those statute provisions, the public is entitled to to expect as Lord Carwell confirmed in Lambeth, that under section seventy three, the permission will be for the same development as was permitted first time, first time round. What the appellants do drives a coach of horses through that. Um, the argument that, well, local authorities grant permissions in different ways and there are no particular rules they must abide by other than if they propose a condition, they've got to give a reason for it. That doesn't take the appellants anywhere, that that makes, it makes the point. It's always for the local um planning authority or the authority on appeal to decide the terms of the permission, both the grant part and. Of the permission, both the grant part and the conditions. A- and it may decide for, for perfectly good reasons to, to express a grant part in. In, in, in very general terms, it may, it may decide it wants to only express the grant part's permission for residential development. Of in this area, because it's in, it's effectively inviting someone to come back. With whatever it is down the line, other applications, section seventy three or section ninety six, eight, who knows? But other applications that will then, will then finesse that. But equally, it may choose, as the authority chose here in twenty seventeen in my submission, it may choose to be precise.
Well, I, I think we're, we're straying into quite a lot of, you know, theory on that. You've got two more grounds to finish and we are sixteen twelve.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, yeah.
Uh, I'm not stopping you, you used the time you've got as you want, but I wouldn't waste it.
No, all right. Um, all the arguments about, isn't it terribly onerous under section seventy three?
You say they're rubbish.
Well, they're rubbish and one, one's got to, one's got to correctly consider the original permission anyway for all sorts of good, good reasons. So I say ground of appeal one, it fails clear, clear conflict. Um, ground of appeal two, um, um, the judge was also right to find that this would be a fundamental alteration, or if we use different terms. There would be a substantial difference, and that is for the very simple reason that there is a world of difference between a. Permission for a solar farm. That can actually export electricity through this substation. And a permission which is the twenty seventeen permission, as, as the authority were arguing literally the next day before. That, that they were granting this permission. And this permission, which is simply dumb. Which has no means to export the electricity it generates. And the test cannot be one based on the size of the particular structure that's been removed, as my learned friend suggests. That's a triumph of form over substance. The test has to be based upon. Fundamentals such as practical effect, and there is this, there is a world of difference. And, and, and I've taken my lords to the twenty seventeen officer update report, which shows the importance the authority placed on this substation when granting the original permission in twenty seventeen. And equally in twenty twenty two, before his honour judge Jarman, when they argued. This substation allows the original permission to export to private offtake. So, so in, in, in all ways, this wasn't, this is not remotely an ancillary item, absolutely fundamental to, to the thing. Um, so the judge was quite right on ground of appeal to um.
That's grounds one and two.
So that's, that's grounds one and two.
What do you say about ground three and four?
Ground, ground three and, and, and four. Um, the first thing I say, and picking up my Lord Holgate's point, is that, that, that the case was deliberately run for the, the claimant below. It, in, in a way that set the highest possible hurdle. Um, that the claimant set out to satisfy the judge. That this authority simply had not understood that the substation would be prohibited. By this permission. It, it was, it was set on a basis that was even higher than the report materially misled members. The reasons that, that the learner judge accepted that argument are in my submission compelling. And in, 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 in answer to my lord's question of what's the right test, in my submission, the right test has, has to be one that, that, that the appellants have to satisfy this court. The judge was, was wholly wrong on this. He was the one considering the evidence and, and dare I say it, he was the one who heard three days of argument and discussed.
Where do you get wholly wrong from?
I'm sorry, my lord, I can't, I can't.
Anyway, and you're content that we look at the relevant authorities, including.
I, I'm, I'm content, my lords will re- reach the view, and my, I'm, I'm going to make my submissions to my lord, lords on the basis. That my learned friend advanced in any of them, that my lords are in complete the same position of the judge, which we know in fact that's completely not true. Um, a- and that you, my lords are entirely free to, to reach your own view on this. So, um, these, these are the points, and, and I say, my learning friend just hasn't engaged with this evidence at all. And, and. They, they, they say it was blindingly obvious, and that, that, that's a phrase they use below, blindingly obvious that the substation was, was, was being removed. Which is why the judge uses that terminology when addressing the argument.
Yeah.
The opposite is true. First, the application, and could we please go to the covering letter for the application? Which is supplementary bundle um twenty, and this, this, this.
I mean, ju- just conscious of, of time, I mean, what, what would be helpful, we were given specific references which. The appellant says means that it's obvious that, that it was there. So if you hit those ones rather than give us lots of different references, I suspect that might be helpful, but we'll start with your.
Could I, please, my lord, uh, build, build the picture from the way it came into the local authority because, because that in my submission is the right way to understand what happened here. So supplementary bundle page, um, tab, tab twenty, there is a detailed covering letter. There's a detailed covering letter and I'm going to have to ask my lords to please read it outside court, i- if it hasn't already been, been read. Um, and make these points a- about it. It, it refers to many different detailed changes. To the original twenty seventeen permission, many of them. Um, in, including frankly, matters um that are. Inaccurous, alignment of security fences and permissive paths, rationalization of internal access, trash. At no point, no point does it mention, and by the way, we're removing the substation, we're proposing to remove the substation. Um, to the contrary, what that letter says, and this is at page one eight nine.
When you say the substation, you, you mean here the thirty three KV?
Yes, I do.
But if you, I mean, fine, but look at the third paragraph just above the second bullet point. Further, a full planning application for the installation of a substation and ground motor, so it was approved on twenty first. Uh, twenty fourth May twenty twenty one, whi- which does put front and centre the twenty twenty one application. Anyway, you take your own course.
It, it, it does, my lord, as I say, the, the twenty twenty one application. Did, that didn't say we're delivering a thirty three KV developer substation, nor does the officer report on it. Um, it reflect that as an understanding. Um, page one eight nine, changes to the original consent. A number of amendments are required for the original plan consent, the changes are as follows, updating the list of approved plans. To make a period of reference to the amended plans, and then it says this, conditions, and there's a long list. And my lord PC fifteen is in there, have been previously discharged by Test Valley Borough Council. To accommodate the design changes, new information is provided for all of the above. Conditions as such as is sought to change the wording of each condition to a compliance condition. To make reference to the newly submitted information. Now, we have never had before us, because it's not on the authority's website, what the conditions proposed were. But what, what, what is crystal clear from this, and the judge understood, is that the letter is saying these conditions have been discharged. So we're going to change.
It implies that whatever's been previously approved is carried forward.
Is carried forward, exactly, that's the only.
You say that can't be right in relation, if that, if that's so for fifteen, that's inconsistent with deletion.
Yes, but, but from, from the perspective of the officer reading this and, and the committee members reading this, that's what they're, that, that's what they're understanding. And, and it's only through, I, I respectfully suggest extreme diligence on the part of. In particular, my client's had the deceased husband, that he digs into the plans. And at page one nine five, one nine four and one nine five, we have his objection, one of his objections. And you will see, he goes to the trouble of defining the words the permission. At page one nine four, which allows us to understand, although the officers did not understand, the members didn't understand. But when he says at his paragraph four, what is clearly shown is the removal of the substation previously considered essential in the permission. He's, he is referring, he's got the point, he, he's seen the risk, but the plans. They, they don't, they don't show that substation. However. However, other objectors, and there are examples before and after. Well, examples before and nine, nine two and one nine three are of obje- pro former objectors who are. Who are completely confusing and conflating everything with the twenty twenty one permission.
Yep.
And then other objectors are such as Mr House at page one nine one, he says, I see a lot of smoke, mirrors going, look at that, I see gas.
Well, we see that summarized in the report.
Yeah, we see it summarized in the report.
You, you have uh some six minutes to, to, to deal with those references he's given.
Yeah. We take things forward and to the officer report in the core bundle.
Thank you.
And what we can see from the officer report is that. The officer report, which, and my learning friends write, this is taken to be the authority's reasoning, because they, they agree with the recommendation. The officer report completely misunderstands what that objection from Mr Fisk is about. Um, we can see, um, what the officer report does is, um. It um begins with introductory text at page two four nine and, um. We can see the long description here at three point two of what the application is proposing. We can see includes, the proposal broadly consists of the following, no mention ever of the removal of the thirty three kilowatt substation in that list of bullet points. Um, and, um, what we can, what we can see, um. Is that when it says, when it says substation. What it means. And, uh, 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 um, is the twenty twenty. One substation at that first bullet, can my lord see that? The proposed substation was located. First bullet at, at, at page two fifty, the proposal broadly consists of.
So which paragraph of the report?
So it's a, it's the long paragraph three point two that goes over the page two four nine to two fifty.
It's by the first hole punch.
Yes.
On two fifty, the proposal broadly consists of, and then it's line three of the first bullet.
Yes, and, and it's, and it's accepted that on, that that, my, my own friends, that that's a reference to the twenty twenty one D and O compound.
Yeah.
We then continue and we get to the discussion. Um, uh, we, we've seen, and I absolutely.
They, they refer to four point one, page two fifty, history, installation of substation, yeah.
Yes, they're, obviously they're aware um of, of the twenty twenty one permission, and my lords have already been to six point three, which sets out, as, as. My learning friends have taken you to over two five three, two five four, removing the solar farm's thirty three KV substation. But what we see is that the authority completely misunderstands that, completely. At eight point three, now page two six one.
Yep.
The authority said, um. A, a number of representations continue to make comments on the substation proposals to confirm a separate planning permission. For the substation development was approved in May twenty one, as such the principle of solar farm substation has been accepted. This application does not seek to vary the substation permission, it only seeks to vary the original solar farm permission, with the aim that they can operate in parallel. Not understood what those objections are about at all.
What about the point, did any seeks to vary the original solar farm permission? So they do know about the original solar farm permission.
They, they do.
And they're saying it's now going to operate with the second solar farm.
Yes, but.
So what, how can it be they didn't understand about the first solar farm?
We can see from their response to the objections that they are not understanding the objector's point.
Can, can, can I try and, is it boiled down to this, picking up my lord's question? They can see, as has been said before, that this permission, if granted, is going to be read with. The two thousand twenty one permission, which focuses on the D and O plus some solar panels. You, you're saying that what this doesn't grapple with is the omission of, or deletion, of the thirty three KV customer substation.
Yes.
That's what the point boils down to.
That's what the.
And that depends upon your client's witness statement before this court, that there's a need for a second thirty three KV substation.
Um, respectfully, my lord, it doesn't depend on my client's witness statement before this call, be- because my client's husband had made the point. In the objection I'm to take here, my lord, to the original.
Well, I, I didn't see him refer with respect, referring to the need for two thirty three KV, that's what we read.
Yes, no, I see.
That's why I put the point that way, that's what this argument now seems to boil down to, unless I'm being unfair.
No, that, no, that, that's fair, it, it does depend on my client being right on the facts, which the judge accepted, that one needs three substations, yes, yes, it does.
And other than that, do you support the judge's reasoning on these points?
I, 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 I do. Paragraph eight point three nine, my lord, is again. The authority completely misunderstanding, and this is where it comes across crystal clear. Middle of the paragraph, comments also highlighted that the substation permitted previously does not appear on the drawings. Asound, as outlined above at paragraph eight point three, this application relates to the variation additions under twenty seventeen. The off- officers, every time they see this reference to the thirty three KV substation and the original permission. They, for whatever reason, they are thinking, objectors are talking about the twenty twenty one D and O compound. And the reason, the reason they're thinking that is because they have adopted the interested party's way of describing that as simply a substation. Which was not how it described it in twenty nineteen in its first section twenty three application. Um, and crucially, at the time this report is being written. No one on the council side has woken up to the fact, they just haven't woken up to the fact that if they impose that condition to. The effect of it will be to prohibit thirty three KV substation. They, they, they simply have not realized that. Um, so that, that in not very many minutes is, is why. And there are, there, there are, I said that points out my skeleton, that's why the judge was right to find as he did on this point. Ground of appeal four, my lord. This, this is the number, if the, if the council had realized that the thirty three KV substation was being removed. They would have had to confront the fact that therefore they would be granting a permission for a dumb solar park. That, that even with the twenty twenty one permission couldn't connect to the grid, but they would have had to confront the fact they're granting.
Again, this does depend upon the additional evidence, that, that there is a need for an additional.
Yes, it does, it absolutely does, my lord, because my client would have, would, would. If, if someone had said in this report, oh, no thirty three KV substation, my client would have said, yes, and that matters. Because of the reasons I've explained in my, I, I'm going to explain my witness statement, but these are the reasons it matters. It doesn't, contrary to paragraph eight point four, where the reason for getting past countryside policy. Is that it would ensure the site can function. The council needed to be told and would have been told, you can't connect to the grid with this plus the twenty twenty one permission, because you're missing the thirty three KV developer substation. So it would have made a difference to matters.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, my lord.
Thank you very much indeed. It's right, you really have um the maximum of five minutes. Thank you, my lord. Uh, on the facts, uh, in the absence of a mistake of fact challenge, the law for this decision must be considered. Based on the evidence before the authority at the time. Uh, the appellants, forgive me, the um respondent's witness statement comes far too late for that. On the law. Uh, Lambeth, um, tab sixteen, paragraph nine, they need to turn it up, the original planning permission comprises not mainly the description of the development, but also the conditions. Any planning permission, every planning permission is a package.
Any planning permission, every planning permission is a package consisting of the words of grant and the conditions. Under section seventy, the local authority can decide how it expresses the grant of planning permission. And that can include contradictory words of grant and conditions. It's a matter of the authority. It may be clunky, but it can be effective to grant a lawful planning permission. Under section seventy three, the words of grant are fixed, but the power imposing conditions is as broad as it is under section seventy. Wheatcroft establishes that you can cut down the scope of development by condition, and it was concerned with the imposition of conditions. If one could simply do it by changing the words of grant, there would be no need to impose a condition to do that instead. So it isn't, it is concerned with the imposition of conditions that cut down. And all the authorities following that, including Cadogan and Finney and Arocroft. Can be seen as the application of the substantial alteration test. If a condition does not alter the, um, the scope of the permission substantially. You can say perfectly properly, it does not alter its nature, it does not alter its extent. Uh, it's in, it's in accordance with Wheatcroft and also satisfies the test in Cadogan and Finney. So in my respectful submission, all these authorities can be seen as. The application of a substantial alteration test to the imposition of condition.
Thank you very much. Um, and, uh, Mr. Williams, in the two, two minutes that remain, did you?
I'll give you two minutes, my lord, I'll, I'll take it as one point to pick up if I may. Um, the point that's made about one eight nine of the supplementary, um, bundle, the covering letter. And it said that, um, that includes conditions, uh, including condition fifteen and to accommodate design changes. New information is provided for the, uh, first conditions, it's, uh, uh, it's sought to change the wording of the condition to a compliance condition. Uh, my learned friends' submissions prove too much, if the, uh, local planning authority were labouring under misapprehension. That this, um, uh, mission, twenty twenty two permission included the, uh, substation. They would have included, uh, condition fifteen as it, uh, previously was, but changed it from precommencement condition to a, um, uh, compliance condition. They did not, they admitted it, that wasn't a mistake, they did so because they understood that the twenty twenty two permission did not include the substation.
In any event, this is, this is a covering letter covering the, uh, accompanying the application. It's not the local planning authority speaking.
No.
Right, well, thank you all very much indeed. I'm sorry you've been under time pressure, but we all inherited the times that had been set. Um, we're going to reserve our judgment, um, it will be distributed in draft and, um, you can then, um. Comment on, on it for typos and producing an order, but, um, please, uh, be very well aware of the restrictions. Because it's always very disappointing to have to lock up anyone for contempt of court. Um, anyway, thank you all very much and to the team sitting behind you for all the hard work that's gone into this hearing.
Thank you, my lord.
Thank you, my lord.